Welcome to Stoughton Media Access Corporation's Community Forum Show. Today, I have the pleasure of bringing you Joe McCrisky. He's the Chairman of the Board and a longstanding member. And Joe, welcome to the show.
Thanks, Steve. It's a pleasure to see you. It's been a long time since I've been on Community Forum. Glad to be back.
Good. And speaking of a long time, Joe, I am totally impressed at your tenure on the board. Tell us about that. How many years?
Just finishing my 18th year as a member of the Board of Selectmen/Select Board.
It's almost like you get a pension for that. I mean, that's such a long time.
You know, in the old days, they did, and that was voted out in the late 1990s. I actually received a phone call at the time from the Norfolk County Treasurer, asking me if I wanted to buy in before the system changes. And when you're raising two kids and you're working the job of a truck driver, you know, you don't have an extra 15, 20 grand laying around to buy into the retirement system. But I wish I did, yeah, because it would right about now. I'd be saying, okay, I can take the retirement. It's pretty, pretty bad when I go to all these retirement parties and events for firefighters and police, and I remember them all coming on the job.
You become a Bayfacto town historian at the same time.
No kidding, huh?
Yeah. So, Joe, tell us a little bit about where the town is going right now. A little bit about your, the board makeup. Let's familiarize the audience with what you do as select people. And just why don't you jump in and tell us where you'd like to take us?
Well, you know, we'll go back a couple of years. As we know, there was, we had some times, we went, we recall election, and things weren't good. You know, there were, you know, the town was divided greatly. And as a result, we didn't get what we deserved as taxpayers. And when it's all said and done, you know, people have always referred to me as a politician, and I'm nothing further from a politician. People can say that, but if I was a politician, I would have taken one of the many opportunities, you know, to go for a state office and do something on that end. But I live out of Tip O'Neill's book, "All Politics is Local." And I'm just a resident like any other person, you know, who wants to make a difference in their town. And I'm passionate about it. I enjoy it. And instead of, you know, getting into sports or outdoor hiking or whatever, I decided to take this up. But, and it's rewarding. I'm very happy, very proud to be in the position that I'm in. Whenever you can gain the trust of, you know, the voters and be put into an elected office, where somebody shares your vision and likes your ideas, you know, it then becomes the challenge of getting those ideas out of your head and into reality. Stoughton being Stoughton, we've had sometimes a tough time. And I remember meeting with a former town clerk who was before Gene Fleming, Margaret Fitzpatrick. And Margaret was the clerk, I believe, in the late 50s, end of the 60s and 70s. And then when she retired, Gene Fleming took over for her. And I was talking to her one day at an event I ran for seniors. We were having a cookout. And I said, "Boy, Margaret, would I like to sit and pick your brain." And she goes, "Well, at my age, Joe," she goes, "it'll be a very short meeting because I don't remember much." And she's, "But I will give you these words of wisdom." She says, "Don't ever forget this. Stoughton always has and always will eat its own." And, and it's funny because I don't say in the violent way that we do that, but we have, we're so passionate in Stoughton. And I don't question other people with what they want to do or why they want to do it. That's their ideas. But I've always referred to, and some people don't like this phrase, but a collision of ideas is what local government should be. Listen to everybody. You don't dislike somebody or call them names, which we're very good at doing in Stoughton, or labeling people the bad guy because they just disagree with your position. And I've always worked to be amendable to a position because, again, this is our town. It's not my town. You know, we all have to work together to make improvements. But not everybody shares that view. And it sometimes it takes a road, goes down a road it really shouldn't. It's not fair to the taxpayers. In my opinion, that's what brought me back to the board in 2019. I ran because I didn't like what I was seeing. You know, I am open to ideas. I'm open to people work as a team. But we had five people that basically were voting as a block. And there's not a lot of room for discussion when you have these five people that were, you know, basically run by the same group. It becomes a political movement. And you don't get that conversation that we need and that other side of the story. And when I got elected, it was the, you know, I won over a person who was a part of that 5-0 block. Not a bad person. I don't dislike the person, but when you run against somebody for some reason, they think you don't like them. And all it is is just a difference of opinion. I was able to win the spot. And as we went along, you know, there were people that accused me of being an obstructionist and this and that. And I said, "Well, if, if you want to call me an obstructionist for trying to bring another side of the story that I don't disagree with some of my colleagues, I'll wear that as a badge." And, and that's what we've been able to do. Since then, you know, I've got very good relationships with members of that, you know, that previous board that I ran against the philosophy of them. But working together, we've, we've created a great thing here. And of all the boards that I, this is my sixth term. And I'm glad I share, the closest thing I have to sports, Steve, is I share with Tom Brady. He had six trophies. I got my sixth term at the same time. I don't know, I might have to run for another term to see what happens. And maybe I can get that seventh one like he did.
All right. So this is a news flash. We're going to run for the next term. All right.
We'll see. I tell people, I never know until time for the papers to be taken out. Because, and that's what I love about it, Steve, is that I have a good life. I'm lucky. I have, you know, my two boys are in my life. I see them all the time. They are everything, everything I stand for. You know, as I say, the air I breathe. I've got a beautiful girlfriend, Maria Simas from Stoughton. We've been together now about 10 years. And things are good. So you want to, you want to enjoy yourself as well. But, you know, when we're making progress like we've been making now, this is what it's all about. A diverse board, different views, different temperaments, you know. And, you know, and with the challenges of today, we don't need to be sitting together voting as one little group. We need to be open to all ideas and all opportunities, you know, that the town has coming towards it.
Now, tell us a little bit about some of your pet projects that you've had in the past. And I know that you're very interested in the old fire truck. So just, I know that's like a pet, like a fun thing that's also good for the town. Tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, well, I've been accused many times of being considered geeking out, as it was said, when I talk about the fire truck.
Yeah.
And the fire truck is, you know, that's something that I do that I started when I was not on the Select Board. It happened, you know, in between that time. You know, I just, I love being in the town. I love doing things. I saw the truck for the first time down at the rededication of Pie Park, which is at the intersection of Canton and Central Streets, named after former Fire Chief Fred Pie. And I saw the fire truck with the name on it, and I thought, wow, that's pretty cool. Some guy owns, you know, a fire truck, and he puts Stoughton on the hood of it. Talking with the guy, his name was Bill Donovan, and found out that it was Stoughton's truck that was purchased in 1927 for $7,800 and went into service in 1928.
Wow.
Yeah. And so I said, "Boy, if you ever get rid of that truck," I said, "I'd like the right of first refusal to buy that." And he said this, he said, "Joe, if it ever goes anywhere, I want it to come back to Stoughton. That's where it belongs. Let it, you know, live the rest of its life in the town where it came from."
Yep.
So I was successful. I went out and raised all the money to buy the truck. I was lucky enough that people believed in it. And when the funding was done, not only did we have the money for the fire truck, we had money for the maintenance and care and custody, which I still have about $900 left of fundraising. We went, we had somebody steal the image of the fire truck one time, and it was found out. And we went to the company that was marketing it. And we settled an agreement which brought in probably $5,000 to $7,000 in funds, you know, that were then used for the fire truck. So it's been a labor of love. When I, when I go down and spend, you know, the day and a half it takes to wax it, polish all the brass and the metals, it's relaxing, believe it or not. But in the last on that, I was lucky this past year, the Community Preservation Committee voted on the application that I submitted for the restoration of the fire truck. And they approved that. It went to town meeting, subsequently was approved for $185,000 for the fire truck to be totally restored to its original factory condition. So that's going to live another 100 years in Stoughton. Way after, it'll be a lifetime after I'm gone, that truck will still be there. And I think that one of the most rewarding things is that, you know, 75, 100 years from now, people will know my name, you know, as getting that truck back. So it's, it's a lot of fun. And, you know, but again, that was, this effort, you know, has just been topped off and launched into space by the members of the Community Preservation Committee and town meeting, which I am extremely, extremely thankful to all of them.
Well, you know, you've taken us back a little in time. So take us forward now. So where do, where does Stoughton go moving forward under the guidance of this, the new board? Tell us a little bit about what you're seeing ahead.
Well, seeing ahead, I don't know as much how far we'll look into the crystal ball ahead. But what I think what we've done in the last few years, and it's what we have done. It's not what I think. We have come together as a board that's diverse, has many differences of opinion, many different areas of expertise and backgrounds. And what we did was kind of after April election, when the Chair of the Board changed, is we started to look, you know, into how can we get away from the things that are plaguing us? Why can't we get moving forward? Why does it seem like always that the town of Stoughton takes a beating from beyond their control? And when you realize it, you know, it was some of the people that were representing the town and meeting with people. And as you know, as in your job as a developer, you know, we become the face of the community. And if what you're hearing from the face of the community isn't fitting with what your goals are as a developer and an investor in the community, you know, that shies people away. People are not going to invest in a town they don't feel welcoming. They're not going to invest in a town that they feel besieged with rules, regulations, bureaucracy and politics. And just that we don't, we've got an eye that you're not good enough for us. And I think that was plaguing us, as I'm sure of it. As, you know, and a fact to that is, and I just posted yesterday on Facebook, is that for the first time in 12 years, other than demolition after a fire, we have a machine parked on the site of the Malcolm &amp; Parsons Building. And the demolition and foundation work is scheduled to stop within just a couple of days.
Oh, nice. I think everybody's going to be happy about that.
Well, that's, and it's a good thing. And, you know, it didn't take much. This is the sad part, Steve, is it didn't take much. Is, I think it was just a different of a view, a different of understanding with the property owners is that they felt that they were not being welcomed. And if anything, that there were people putting undue, you know, conditions on them to get their property built. You know, we went through a zoning, the schmoo, which we spent the longest time on the schmoo, ended up being the worst thing that ever happened. Because if anything, it just, it tied the hands of development. It didn't promote development. And, and then when we have people bringing their own personal opinions, and we'll say people in elected office, because I won't use the word politicians, but past members of the board, you know, when you tell, if I tell a developer how to develop a building, you know what we're going to get? Trees. And that's exactly what we have in downtown, is we had a tree grow out of the ground to the extent that it's probably 20 feet because it's growing up from the base of the foundation. So it's not a good thing. What we have to do is bring our staff, the paid professionals that we have in Town Hall, to work with us to give us guidance as to what will work and what won't work. And it's not, it's not ridiculous to say that we reach out to people like yourself, who, if I believe, was the first building years ago to be totally renovated, the old Mr. G's, when you came to town. And that was the first time the two of us met, if you remember that conversation.
All right. I think Pacico might get the nod on that. They did a beautiful job on the Pacico building. You know, I think they were really the lead, but I certainly followed them. Yeah.
Yeah. It's so, you know, we've got to look at, now, we look at Corvo Development, who has put up three apartment buildings that are beautiful buildings. They're not, you know, they're bringing in, you know, upper clientele. They're bringing in good tax dollars and good tax dollars because the rents are not, you know, considered the lowest. So we're bringing in a different element that's paying a higher level of taxes based on the property tax of the building, as you know how that works. And how do we thank that guy for being a part of our town? A former Chair wanted to put some of the liability, or all of the liability on the developer when it was a previous building inspector that gave bad information. So the property had some risk associated with it. And the town's answer then was to put it on the developer. When this was a mistake that was made by a previous building inspector. That's not my philosophy. And you're not going to encourage people to come to the town. So then, fast forward a few years, you know, we have the Malcolm &amp; Parsons Building burned down, or the Shingu Restaurant burned down. And that project never got off the ground. It took us the longest time just to get them to, you know, to get what it looks like today. And it sat there as people telling a contractor or a developer what's good for them and what they can't have. Now, granted, some of it, I do agree, was too much. We're still a small town. And some of the earlier plans were a little vibrant, we'll say. But we finally got to a point, but it's taken way too long. This is what I hate about local politics. The bureaucracy getting in the way of progress, listening to the people that know what they're doing. This is not my area of expertise. And in my job, I won't take a backseat to anybody on what I do in my full-time career. But when it comes to this, you know, I think it goes back to the greatest debate in politics, back to Lincoln and Douglas, when it was discussed as to what is the role of an elected official? Are you there to do what the taxpayers tell you to do, voters? Are you there to just fulfill their wishes? Or are you there to use your judgment, your experience, you know, in your decision-making process to represent all of the taxpayers equally and fairly? I think it's that. So with just sitting down with the two owners of that project a few weeks back, we ironed out a few details and I basically conveyed to them that on behalf of the entire Select Board, as it sits today, we want to work with them. And what we did was we arranged a few things which will work out in the future. But it gave them the comfort that they didn't have before that meeting, that we can work together. And they showed that. Now, I'm always doing this, you know, and I'd say to anyone on the Facebook, on the Facebook post, there's been people that said, "I'll believe it when I see it." I as well, listen, I'm with you on that. Because, you know, let's say the history sure is working against us. But the fact that the machine showed up, it's the first time it's happened. We got to take that as a positive step. So it, you know, downtown, I think it's going to send, you know, a larger statement to the property owners within the center of town that we do care, we want to work on this, and we just got to stay focused on working as a team and not going off-road, you know, and one person trying to, you know, basically lead the band. You know, and I think, you know, you need a conductor. We have a town manager who is, in my opinion, the best town manager we've had come through. And I would give the exception to my dear friend, retired Judge Crimmens, but he wasn't allowed to stay there long enough from the internal politics. And he had things going the right way. And, you know, back in, that was the day when people would get too involved and forgot their role as a member of the Select Board. Your question, what do we do? We are the highest elected officials in the town. We're responsible for all the policymaking of the town of Stoughton that would affect everything and all the services that we have. We don't get involved with the school department. So unlike other people, I don't push my nose in the issues of the school department. And there are no members of this board currently to do that. Let the elected school committee work with the schools. Our town manager is considered the daily manager of all the departments in town. She has the right to hire, fire, abolish departments, create departments, and all positions, you know, that are not contained in the collective bargaining process. So it's, it's definitely a division of the responsibilities that we have as a team. But again, we need that good, proper working relationship with the town manager to hold her or he accountable and to do the right job. Town Manager Robin Grimm has been doing awesome. She keeps the board informed. She has created a staff that is just really working on the best interest of the people of Stoughton. It's truly going in the right direction. And as a result, I mean, it's, it's visible that we, we finally, we've got a new fire station proposed. It's a realistic plan. It's an achievable plan. It may not be what some people want, but, you know, it's not to say that we're not going to address other things. So in the short three years of this board, more so, I say, I can only do what I can do as a chairman. As you know, you're only as good as the rest of the board and, and the, in the support that we have. We're working together. So we can come to an idea and say, "Let's talk about that." And we take one position based on the input of five. You know, there were many times in my first couple of years on the board that I didn't find out about anything until it was brought to the table that night. There was a lot of behind the scenes running around by some people that they were better than other members of the board. And I just don't, I don't buy into that. You know, we're moving in the right direction, believe me. And I'm happy, I'm proud to work with this board.
All right. And Joe, now, I didn't prep in any way with you ahead of time, but I'd like your candid thoughts on this. So as a taxpayer in the, in the town, and I think I'm not unlike other taxpayers throughout the Commonwealth, we are fearful of the budgets almost in a runaway state. So, and maybe that's not a good frame for what it is. Maybe it isn't a runaway state, but the idea that the budgets continue to go up. And there's a hot topic is really about pensions and things like that. So I'm sort of of the opinion that the federal government should step in and set metrics for how much should be spent in each area of governance so that the town could have guidelines. Instead of being free to spend, like, whatever you want in any given area, let's say, for instance, the Fire Department, the Police Department, all the departments, there should be a study done that would suggest that you might only need, you might be limited to 16% of your budget goes to retirements. And you have to figure that out. You just can't keep bumping all the pensions and budgets and things like that up. So what do you think about that sort of broad thought process of deciding on how to control budgets?
Well, I think part of it too is, there's a lot of mechanisms that are beyond our control, as you know. We have to deal with the unions. We have to bargain with them. We can't say we don't have enough money. And there are metrics that we use through the Municipal Municipal Association, and we're comparable to a certain amount of towns. You know, not that, we're not like Stoughton, Stoughton, Canton, Canton's a little different than us. Sharon has, they're smaller. They have less of a commercial tax base by far. And their tax rates are through the roof. I mean, you know, a lot of people can't, you know, can't even buy in Stoughton, never mind go to Sharon. So every town is different. But when you look at the metrics of a community, we're similar to like Stonem, Methuen. When you look at the per capita income, that's what changes things as well. And that affects how we get our local aid through the cherry sheets. You know, per capita income, the money that comes in so that we're not raising taxes beyond the people's ability to pay it.
Right.
Now, you'll always have, let's face it, you know, if you give an municipal employee a $3 raise, there's going to be people that say, "You should be lucky you have a job and you've got a great pension." They do. But when you match it up with similar positions in the private sector, there's a lot more money to be made out there. But people do say, "Well, you know, I'll take the lower-paying job and, you know, and pay into the retirement system because when it's all said and done, I get a better retirement." And, and they do that by investing in a lower-paid job. I mean, we have, for instance, we have CDL truck drivers that are on the back of a trash truck, throwing trash. And they could probably go out and get a job paying an average of $4 more an hour. But they take that cut in pay and work on the back of the truck because they know eventually they'll move up the ladder. And it results in a better, you know, may still not be as good as a private sector job, but the retirement's better. And if I had it to do all over again, you know, and what I do in my job, I'd probably do the same thing.
And your job, by the way, if I could interrupt, your job, you do risk compliance work for vehicles and things like that. So it's a very difficult job. You really have to be precise because if you don't handle the risks, you're going to have, let's say, tires falling off of vehicles, creating huge liability. You know, a little bit of that goes on for you.
Right. No, exactly. And I've dealt with that many times when we look at, you know, the Maintenance Department of a transportation company. And, you know, some people know I've done extensive amount of work within the bus industry when we had some, you know, high-profile people on TV, you know, that were having problems. So it is the same. And, but, you know, when you get right down to the municipal government is, what do we want to say we want to cut on? Now, right now, when I first got on the board, we were giving out pay raises at the time, even under 2.5%, which limits our ability to raise beyond the 2.5%. Is, we were giving out 3% raises on average. That was the average, 3, 3, and 3 over a three-year period. So over a three-year contract, they ended up with a 9% pay raise over time. Right now, we're giving out 1.5, 1, 1.25. I mean, they're very small raises. Now, the Select Board only deals with the municipal side of government. We don't get involved with the schools. So I couldn't be, you know, factual on what that information is, on how that works on the school end. And I do that purposely because, again, you know, our friends on, you know, the school department have different needs, different funding mechanisms, grants and everything. It's totally different on that end. But they live within their means as well as now the municipal side needs to as well. We have, we're doing better now under this town manager of collecting back taxes, which we haven't been doing very good at in the past few years. There was hundreds of thousands of dollars for, you know, uncollected. So we start the process on foreclosures, and it goes in, it takes years to get custody of a piece of property, only, you know, in the man-hours of staff working on it, only to be able to put it out to bid, and you get a quarter or half of your money back. You know, it just doesn't work out because the property goes into decay. It's not worth anything other than basically the lot. And so you don't get that return, so you're always losing. Water and sewer rates, we're at, we're at the will of MWRA unless we can find a source for water, which we've tried in years past, but it's just not a big enough site. So we resorted to rebuilding our wells. We have right now the best water department superintendent in my history that only goes back as far as Larry Barrett, who was the Superintendent of Public Works for years. And when he left, I never thought we'd be able to get what we have. We have a gentleman now, his name is Phil McNulty. And he is on technology with this to the point that if somebody, a household, a residential ratepayer or a commercial business, that they can tell by looking at a computer system and watching flow, basically, and know if you're going to have a leak in your cellar ahead of time, you know, before the bill gets out of sight. Because they look at the daily usage. The system flags, you know, unusual use on an area, which allows them to go in and close it down, which is good. We're protecting our investments. And, you know, instead of us having to raise taxes, and I saw a recent post that somebody posted on me and said, "Don't forget to lower our taxes." It was a campaign promise. I've never, nor would I ever say, "I'm going to lower your taxes." Because that is the dumbest statement you could ever make because we don't know the needs of the community. What I will do is to work to make sure that we don't need to raise taxes anymore than we have to. This idea of going right to 2.5% all the time, you know, if we don't need it, we shouldn't do it. But the town saw fit to implement this, you know, to establish the new sewer system on Park Street. I hope and pray I didn't vote for it because I just didn't see the data to reflect that we were going to bring in a whole bunch of money. I heard a lot about it. I heard we're going to get new businesses, we're going to be additions. You know, we're going to have multiple hookups. I heard more from residents that said they don't need it, they don't want it. But I think I was the only person that voted against it because I just didn't see the value and/or the return on investment for that kind of money being spent. I hope I'm wrong. I hope I can go to anybody who voted for it and say, "Good work." Oh, I hope that I'm wrong, and we get all sorts of money. But again, when we do things like that, you know, that's a gamble, you know, and I hope it works out. But we've got to live within our means, you know, Proposition 2.5. Somebody had mentioned the other night, this is the year, the 20-year anniversary. And I, oh, man, I remember that was implemented. So now, you know, the hair, if you look now, he's got a little lighter hair those days. And it was dark then when that was implemented. But I think that we're doing okay. Can we do better? We can always do better. We can always do better. And the whole idea is We can always do better. And the whole idea is to be able to work together as a team. Work together as a select board, debate issues without them becoming personal. You know, working for the good of the town, looking what's good and what's bad. And I think when we took some criticism recently on breaking apart the public safety facility and and doing it differently and putting our attention on what we need critically, which was the fire station. And it's, to my opinion, as I've said, it's been an insult, in my opinion, to the men and women that served the fire department over the years. To have them working in a building that's a hundred years old, it's not suitable for the equipment, it's not suitable for the people, it it just is not right. So we decided to split the projects, address the police station at a later date and to focus on the fire station. And again, I'll I'll credit staff because they are the ones that did it. This this select board, as it's seated now, you know, got the benefits of what there are three remaining members that charged the town's staff and the town manager to take this project, to look at it from their point of view. Working with our consultants and to come up with a plan that was workable. Now, what we went from was a previous board makeup, I came in on the tail end of it that established this public safety building committee. And I'm not criticizing, I'm not putting the blame on anyone. But the fact remains that all we did basically was spend a little more than three hundred thousand dollars with nothing to show for it but a a plan for a fire station that we didn't have a big enough piece of land for. That's not a good investment of a taxpayer's money. Now, again, I want to be quoted because I'll get all the phone calls after this show airs. And people saying that I was wrong, but the fact is, we spent three hundred thousand dollars of a taxpayer's money and only got from it a lot of talk and a plan for land we didn't have to put the building on. So what we did by carving the the police station out, and the reason we we, I I believe, I can't speak for everybody, but I thought was that the police station isn't as hard to renovate. We own the piece of property to the right of it. And the the main structure of the police department is, it's firm. It needs work. Unfortunately, the mistakes we made that we didn't know back in the early nineties and mid nineties is that when we had people that were not qualified to be the clerk of the works, to oversee the project. They were good Stoughton residents, honest, hardworking people that wanted to make a difference in their town as well. But they weren't qualified for the task they were handed. And mistakes were made. You know, we put in residential heating systems into the fire station on Central Street. We didn't have the right ventilation system, which resulted in molds growing inside the building. The same thing, we used residential windows in the police station when it was built instead of industrial ones in an effort to curb cost. Now, those residents, I stand behind my words. I thought they, and I still think, they were trying to do things on a cheaper value because it was their tax dollar paying part. But in hindsight, you know, we we now know that we need to build a building like it's an industrial building. And look at the useful life, so it it doesn't, it's nothing less than seventy five years.
So that, so Joe, that's, let's say that's one of your sort of prime things for Stoughton to think about. Give me a couple of other things that really should be on the hot list for Stoughton.
Well, okay, we we did, we said we got the fire station that's going, we have a plan for it. It's now in the review process. Which will give us that for our fire protection and give us a state of the art facility. We have now, again, the Malcolm and Parsons Building that a machine's on site for. In three months, Steve, we've we've got back on track with a couple of things and have them moving in a reasonable direction instead of spinning our wheels. I believe, and I've said right along, we have an economic development manager who should be out there and bringing business into our town. And and bringing valuable business to our town. We need to come up with a plan that puts together the ideas from the industry. I I want to see people that come from industry of developing business locations and community structures and have them come to Stoughton. Because we see things, Mashpee Commons, if anyone's ever been to Mashpee Commons, you know, we need to be thinking like that. That we make a good place to live. We include, we we're still, and some people have tried to do this, but have been, had their rear ends handed to them. It's to try and address the need for fifty five and older. You know, that is, I mean, I'm sixty now. I live in my own home. I don't, I'm, eventually, I'm not going to be able to take care of that house by myself, but I don't want to leave my town. You know, and we don't have enough fifty five and older. And we should be focusing on fifty five and older and then, you know, senior citizens. Because what ends up happening with some of these, as you know, and even public housing? What happens is Mrs. Jones or Mr. Jones is, you know, seventy years old. They move into their nice little apartment that's, you know, subsidy, you know, it's federally and state subsidized. And then they let their nineteen year old son, grandson move in that might have problems. You know, and we need to have a place where our seniors can stay in their homes. We have a couple of places, but the minute we take federal funds, that opens it up to a whole new cast of characters that sometimes isn't good for the environment that we wanted to take care of. We've got to find a way to invest in fifty five and older for our seniors. They're they're me and people my age, you know, just just getting into it. And if we're going to say we want a senior, affordable senior housing, then we've got to say it's got to be something that, you know, if you get this. If it's fifty five and older, you can't be raising children or taking in other family members. The the hard part of that is, is that, as you know, some of these things are federally funded as well. We can get five, seven million dollars in federal aid to put this up, but we have to take it with those terms. And those terms sometimes don't fit the community. So if we're going to, you know, and as you know as well, we we did try the development on the on Turnpike Street that the Conroy Development had done years ago, where there was single family homes, small, two little bedrooms, all on one floor. And it allowed people to move in, but for whatever reason, maybe it was ahead of its time and it really wasn't as much of a need. It ended up that he had to come back to the board and ask to be relieved from that because the property was sitting vacant. So, you know, but we've, we've got to find out and be able to, again, we have to be smart enough, and I think we struggle with that. We have to be smart enough to say to somebody else, hey, how did you overcome this? And learn from somebody else. Unfortunately, a lot of us seem to get that problem. We stick our finger in the belt buckle and tell you how great we are. And when you say based on what experience, that's what people seem to falter. And I think if we can do that and and we can get to that type of a, you know, just a real nuts and bolts conversation. Put personalities and egos aside, until we can do that, you know, I think we're going to continue to struggle. We've had, in my opinion, we've had some great opportunities recently, but, you know, people all want to, you know, pump up their chest and tell you what they know and instead of just listening to the facts. And if there's, if there's cracks in, you know, in in a plan, fix it before you allow it to move forward. Instead of just, you know, getting together. And we we have groups in our town and the neighborhoods. I wouldn't want something that's not, you know, close to what the integrity of my neighborhood is being there. We have that right, you know, but we also have the right to hold people accountable to say, well, if this is going to be in my neighborhood. I want proof and I want fact and I want hardcore information that shows me this isn't going to be something less than you're saying it will be. Right? Because unfortunately, we've seen it.
So talk to me a little bit about the center and about making Stoughton a destination. What do you have for thoughts on what will make Stoughton more attractive to Massachusetts?
Well, you know, I I've always struggled with that, you know, and we've seen so many different people talk about making Stoughton a destination. Unless something dramatic happens. With the makeup of Stoughton Center, I'm a little less confident that we're going to have Stoughton be quote unquote a destination. We have, we have Route one thirty nine that ends there, one thirty eight goes through it, twenty seven goes through it. And if you look at the the state road layout, then the Commonwealth of Massachusetts does not recognize Stoughton Center. Their state roads go through Stoughton Center. But they, the road picks up, if you're coming from one thirty eight into Boston. The state road ends right about where the the former Shaw's where Price Right is. As a matter of fact, it is right by Rockman Trust. So that road, the state official Route one thirty eight, where the state has jurisdiction over it, ends there. You go down through the center of town, you follow one thirty eight out towards eastern, the state road again picks up down by the Dunkin Donuts and the Tedeschi's Food Shop. So the Commonwealth of Massachusetts does not recognize that as a state road. The same thing with Route twenty seven, down by your building. The state road picks up way on the other end and it doesn't pick up until after the the Stoughton Cooperative Bank going up Park Street towards Brockton, you'll see.
But what's the effect of that, Joe? What what is the?
Limited state funds. What what happens then is we can't be put on capital projects for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, like a Route twenty four or the Mass Pike. We we rely solely on our senator and our state representatives to get us money voted in a bond bill or something like that. So for us to get the real change we need in downtown, like maybe widening roads, you know, taking some older buildings out, I don't know what would be the answer, but without that real hardcore state involvement, it's always going to be difficult. So what do we do? Do we do we ignore it? No, we don't. We we try to make things, you know, fit so that we can keep our own, you know, identity in Stoughton. And make it a use that, you know, people will go to. So unfortunately now, and I've seen a a great documentary, or documentary is Channel Five's Chronicle on program that was implemented in Cambridge, and it is more of the housing with the needs, you know, in the bottom floors. So it's a sort of the idea of the Mashpee Commons. When you live down there, you live in a townhouse. And then at the bottom floor is the bakery, it's the barber shop, maybe it's a dentist's office. Small uses, we're not going to get department stores or a lot of retail stores coming because look at the internet now. I mean, now we're seeing, you know, ten and twenty trucks a day and on our own roads from Amazon. And you can get it the next day. Malls are closing. You know, all the big malls that we've had out there, they're closing or ready to close. So retail's changing completely. And I think by doing that, that's going to be the destination, I think, that we become, is that we are close to the T. People can get to work in Boston, they can keep their, you know, reasonable transportation, whether they buy a little car to get them around. What we do in in the downtown, we we emphasize on the housing. And with the rents that, you know, that are out there now, Stoughton is attractable, you know, to attractive rather, to having the train line. So if we're going on the housing route and we're getting people that are making more, moving here, paying higher rents. And we're providing what they need, maybe a little market that has a meat counter, like a Bob's Food Mart, Paige's Variety. If we can get something like that in downtown, or we get a nail shop or, you know, avocados, some small restaurants, takeouts. I think that's what we we should be looking at. And and that has got a solid, because the area is changing so much, as you know, Steve. Is the area is changing so much that why can't we do a little bit of what other cities and towns are doing to grow that? Forty Bs, we've had the bad side of forty Bs. Okay, but forty Bs, if you look at what they did over in Sharon, it's all in one area. You know, it's it's not built in a residential neighborhood that somebody looks out their back window and sees a megaplex. They've got it on the other end of town, you know, and they've got plenty of land. They can meet all their needs there. So thank God we've we've stopped, but look at the 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 forty B we had down on Central Street. It's still failing to find an identity. That's the downside of forty Bs because we weren't here on the forefront, ready to say, no, we don't want that. We didn't have enough forty B housing. So people, the developers were allowed to come in and basically do whatever they want. We couldn't stop them. So if we can get some of these programs, you know, working better for us and working again with the developers. Instead of, you know, just standing on our high horse and saying, we don't want you. The last thing you want to do is tell anybody, we don't want you or shut up, because that's when they're going to be more vocal and they say, well, tough. I'm going to look at the regulations, I'm going to abide by those state regulations and you've got no say. So I I think we still have a great opportunity to move forward in Stoughton. Will it look like our little downtown, you know, as it was quite years ago? No, but then again, I mean, you you move with the times. And and I think we've got to be open to doing that, but protecting the integrity of the town we want. We don't want, you know, some things that are bad. And there's no, and there's no problem with saying we don't want that in our town. But I think sometimes we say it too fast and then we interfere with that by trying to tell the people that are going to develop. No, we don't want that. And they just do what they want after they've basically been shunned. You know, instead of saying, what can we do to work with you? Would you be willing to give up this little bit and we'll give in to this? And what we do is instead of getting a, you know, we won't get a megaplex of multi millions and billions of dollars of taxes coming in. But we won't get a guy that comes in, builds and takes off, we never see him again. And we're dealing with, you know, the leftovers, which we've we've experienced as well.
Yep, I I know there's some interest in putting together a beer garden in the center of town, adjacent to the to the train station. So that has some interest and it could be very nice to to maybe draw people in, just in Stoughton to Stoughton Center to to create a more vibrant place.
Right. And, you know, and that passed, this passed Tuesday night. And unanimous vote of the board. And I'm sorry, there was one, one, uh, one vote against it. But majority of the board voted for it. It's a good idea. You know, and it's it's kind of, you know, they say leadership is jumping over the edge and building your wings on the way down. And, you know, and I think that was one of those. This could be a great thing. You never know that if the beer garden, if there's that market for it, there may be more people that want to come in and put it in a building. You know, and then rent a location in downtown and call it the Beer Stop. I know that we've had some interest with breweries in the past. So they need their retail establishments to, you know, to sell their wares. Maybe there's something we can do. And and I, you know, is one thing I'm real big on, unlike some other boards who who talked about the word process and everything they did. And one time on a, an election event, I counted the word process about two hundred and twenty times.
Oh, my goodness.
And and the board never followed the process. So we've, we've got that running smoother now as well during the past few years. And there is a process for the beer garden, you know, that you come in with certain information. If it doesn't get completed, well, it doesn't come to the board. This way here, on behalf of the residents, we know exactly what's going to happen. You know, we want to make sure it's safe. We want to make sure that there's protection for the people that are there. You know, that there's insurance coverage. There's all these little things. We want to make sure it's there. But now we've got them permitted and they're going to happen. And it may be something that spurs something in town, which is right. I mean, we we talked, if you remember, we talked a little bit about during the COVID of trying to do something with food trucks in town. And of course, they were the naysayers. And I did share some of the concern is the protection of local businesses. You know, people that are paying rent, you know, and and selling sandwiches, you know, right in the center of town, Olivia's. It, you know, they're doing their job, trying to survive and and keep their business going. And I was concerned with, you know, bringing in a food truck that would take away from that business, paying taxes. And it employs, you know, our residents as well. So it just, it's getting, it's getting what the town deserves. We just begun a conversation, a respirited conversation with Amazon. Amazon, if you remember, they got a ten year TIP agreement, Tax and Consent to Finance. Where they're allowed to come in and get a tax break on their property taxes and their real estate taxes. It's heavier upfront and then the number grows over the term of the ten year agreement. Well, in that agreement, Amazon has agreed to do certain things and to keep a line of communication. They were supposed to hire one hundred people, you know, that lived in the town. And I was on this and I was glad that we could stop the conversation, you know, since April, that I've reached out and begun the process to negotiate with Amazon. They did tell us that they were, in fact, employing more than a hundred people that live in Stoughton. And I told them, well, great, prove it. Because the numbers that they report to the state, which they're required to do as a recipient of a TIP agreement. The past two years, they showed twenty five in nineteen, two thousand nineteen. In two thousand twenty, they recorded twenty seven. So they're telling me that they have over a hundred. So you you volley back and say, okay, prove it. I have no problem with that information, but show me the names, you know, and their addresses. You know, or, you know, I know they can't do certain amounts, but we're going to challenge it. There's another line that said, if Amazon comes and decides to do anything with transportation beyond just their distribution location of trucking in and trucking out, that they would come back to the town and discuss that. Well, on Maple Street, they have approximately two to three hundred trailers. I'd say on average, two hundred trailers in there. And we should be getting property tax for those trailers. Which could add up to about eight hundred dollars per taxable vehicle on a forty five, fifty three foot trailer.
Right.
So we should be getting that tax dollar. Furthermore, there's a company in there that's based out of Connecticut and they registered their trucks out of Stoughton. And Amazon says, well, we're not using them. Or why did they register their trucks out of Stoughton for the name? But the registrations of those trucks are based in Connecticut. So we're losing the excise tax of those vehicles. So we're discussing that. Now, I'm hoping, we've had a very, very fruitful discussion to this point with Amazon. I've got to say, the folks that I've been talking to, you know, are good, honest people, doing a job. They're working for a company that is on, you know, rocket propulsion. And if the names and faces change. And uh, if the names and faces change every day, because they're growing so much. But that all being said, I don't worry about the profits in the, you know, and the the uses at Amazon. I care about the people at Stoughton get getting what they deserve and it's revenue. So if, I think if we keep moving in this direction, Steve, where we have an open line of communication with number one, thoughts and ideas. You know, if people think about what can I, what would I do if I was sitting on the select board to try to make a difference? There are a group of people that do that on the board, we, you know, for the most part, everybody is actively involved. And it comes down to our boards and commissions as well, how can the planning board? Make it easier for somebody to come into town. But maintain, you know, quality and and, you know, and a good re- return on investment for that business. Or do we want to just say, we don't want you, we're not sure about this, we don't like it. You know, again, any jackass can, you know, can kick over the barn door, but it takes a carpenter to build one. We've got to take that analogy, uh, analogy to it. We struggle with that, but I think as a community, we're getting better. It's nice that I, and believe me, I was very, very hesitant, because I don't post on Facebook. I don't like it because it it doesn't become fact based, it becomes a lot of opinion and opinion without research. So I'm very hesitant to do that, but I did post the the fire station and um. The Malcolm and Parsons property, which uh, it was, I was, I was pleased to see that it was. Nine, at least ninety five percent, all positive people like what's going on. So. I'm looking forward to being able to work with that town departments. We have good departments, we have boards and commissions that the select board appoint. In my opinion, there'll be some faces changing a lot eventually because we just have a few people that. Get in there and they think it's all about them and it's not, it's about the town of Stoughton. It's the residents of Stoughton who you serve through your appointment of the select board who answer to, you know, the residents. And and with that, I'm even uh, even to the point where I I think it's it's about time. Uh, you know, I'm considered the old guy of the crowd. But um, it's really time that we start looking at our form of government. Because that cha- that really ties our hands in a lot of issues. Because if you're Steve Kelly Stoughton resident. And you know, you are, you know, watching these things and you see a great project move forward, but somebody on a particular board or commission. Voted against it and really didn't have a lot of research on it. You can't touch that person as a resident. You can't vote them in or out because they're appointed by the select board. So, you know, that's not good, I believe, you know, we should be looking down the road at a a town manager. And a um, a board of councillors. A town council or just councillor. And you know, then it's more reflective of the community. That we have our eight precincts in town, you could have a councillor from each precinct and then a couple of them, it will say three, something like that, that are at large. Represented, you know, and voted by the entire community. So now, Steve, if we don't, we're not moving forward on development, there's nobody to blame. But the elected official working with the town manager. Because you essentially become the zoning board, the planning board and all these committees that are there. And and I think that the accountability factor, and if people know. You know, I could sit here in my elected role and say, geez, I'm sorry, I I'm not on the planning board or the zoning board, I couldn't affect that, I would have liked to. But I appoint those people. So now we take that level out and we make it answerable to the residents. If you don't like the way the development's going in the town, you vote out your councillor, simple as that, you've got the power. And that's where town meeting years ago is descended from the Revolutionary War. You know, when everybody left their homes, you know, out on the farms and went in, you know, to the Continental Congress. And uh, that's how, and look what it is now, it's it's losing, it's losing the engagement, in my opinion, of every resident in town. And that's what you want.
Yeah, so it seems like uh, what you're presenting might be a great opportunity for new faces.
It would, it would, and and again, what it does too, Steve, is it protects the integrity of all of our neighborhoods. As you know, we have different, different properties all over town, we have homes selling up in the the West Street area, Ames Pond. You know, three million dollars. And then we have homes that are right outside the center of town, maybe not even a thousand feet. I mean, granted, in this market, they're selling for four hundred fifty thousand. And um, but the neighborhoods are different, the needs are the integrity, you know, I mean. In in my neighborhood, we have cars parking all over the street, parking on sidewalks. You don't get that in another section of town, so if we have a diverse board of of eleven. And that board makes the decisions, well, now you've got to cross reference. And to say, listen, there's going to be a day that your neighborhood needs to be represented. So then we can do that as a team and there's no other layers. You know, that old um, Harry Truman, the buck stops here, you don't have to worry about dealing with a planning board. Or, you know, or special interest groups, we have a few of those that, you know, some people don't want any development. You know, none at all, and some people that don't mind development, they know it's a way to the future. But we want it to be responsible, we want it to fit within our neighborhoods and be good and and not bad for the neighborhood. But, you know, it's, that's where, you know, they say too many cooks spoils the soup. You know, and I think that's what we suffer from as well.
All right, well, Joe, this has been a great interview, I want to thank you.
It's up already, huh?
Yeah, it's, time's close and um, I I want to thank you for your time, I want to thank the audience as well, I want to thank our executive producer Roy Cohen. And all of the people that kind of behind the scenes that other people don't see that are part of these shows. So um, on behalf of them, I want to uh, thank you as well for coming on. And uh, we hope to hear from you again in the future. So uh, thanks for watching Community Forum, uh, for the audience and thanks for being part of it here as a guest, Joe.
Oh, thank you, my pleasure, thank you.